Keep going though, yeah.
All right, everyone. So we have a couple of council members still on the way. Um, but today's work session is on the law enforcement action partnership and getting a better sense of, um, some possibilities. I know Vice President Lupien is, is, um, also reached out to, to some of the folks on the call. So I'll turn it over to the VP to get us started and then we'll, we'll turn it over to our, our guest today.
Yeah, absolutely. This idea originated, um, in this current iteration. I understand that there's been other efforts in the past with the UCLM proposal for a community public safety response course. Um, Councilmember P O, Councilmember Lightfoot, and I have been involved in that effort for a year, maybe. Um, and the, can you hear us? Yes. When we were involved, um, we, we became involved with law enforcement action partnership. And, uh, I'm really excited about the work that you've described, um, that you might be able to do for Rochester to help us understand our, the layout of our 911, uh, calls and what other types of responders might be able to field those calls to reduce our reliance on the police force in a time when, um, there are, we have a severe, uh, labor shortage and, um, some calls are especially lower level community calls are, um, not being responded to or being responded to with a delay. Um, so, Councilmember P O, do you want to say anything?
Uh, the force of continuing the conversation seems to how we can push this forward.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Well, do you guys want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Um, I, I think I'm going to start the show off and then I'm going to introduce my friends, uh, that are joining me here today. By the way, we're in three different time zones. Amos is in LA and Lionel is in Johannesburg, South Africa. So we are, uh, we, we're global here with you today. But first, let me just say thank you to City Council for sitting down with us. All of you know me, so I'm not going to introduce myself, but I will tell you a little bit about how I got to be where I am with LEAP. Uh, following, um, well, actually during my time as Deputy Chief of Community Relations and Engagement, I became a speaker for LEAP. Uh, LEAP is an organization that is leading the charge on criminal justice reform. We have been for over 20 years now. We're a global organization that has well over 250, almost 300 speakers globally, working specifically for improving the law enforcement industry, improving the criminal justice system and making sure that it's done right and done appropriately. Um, I was approached to become a speaker. Shortly thereafter, I became, um, a recruiter for them, looking for other speakers to bring into our fold to help push our mission forward. And ultimately, for the past two years now, I've been board chair for them. So we're here today because of all of the issues that have gone on with policing and the criminal justice system over the past couple of years. And, you know, as we've taken a good, strong look at it and tried to come up with intelligent ways of improving, uh, we've recognized that not only are we short-staffed, like Vice President Lupien just mentioned, recruitment is down across the board in the United States. Um, we're not retaining officers as well as we used to, and it's just become an untenable situation. So, you know, recognizing the multitude of responsibilities that are placed on the heads of law enforcement, LEAP has worked very hard to come up with methods and structures and strategies to alleviate some of that responsibility, to take some of those calls for service that don't necessarily have to be a uniformed officer going to it and put them in the hands of people that are more trained and skilled in dealing with them, issues like mental health concerns, uh, drug addiction, um, just, you know, low-level incidents that don't necessarily rise to the level of a uniformed police response. Ultimately, our goal is to not only improve the criminal justice system, but also improve the health of our communities that we serve all over the place. Um, and with that, I am going to, uh, introduce first Amos Irwin. Amos has been with LEAP for a number of years now and actually serves as our primary coordinator for all of our programs. Amos probably wears more hats than, than he can actually carry, but he does a phenomenal job of doing that. Um, and then next I'm going to introduce Lionel King. Lionel King is our newest member, uh, one of our newest members to LEAP. And he has been charged with overseeing our community responder model. And the community responder model is actually what we're going to be discussing today. Um, I'm sure all of you have had an opportunity to kind of take a look at the, the prospectus that we sent over to you to, to sort of get a sense as to what we do. Um, it's, it's a multifaceted strategy that actually goes in and evaluates the 911 system or the, the police response systems in the municipalities that we go into, um, trying to identify ways that we can move it into something similar to what I discussed a moment ago, that being, um, people that are well-trained to deal with some of these things responding as opposed to uniformed police officers. So for that, or with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lionel and, and have him take up the, the ball. And I believe Amos is also going to share his screen a little bit and hopefully you guys can see that and get a sense as to what we're doing. So, um, we're going to save some time at the end for some questions. So let's get started.
Uh, thank you so much, Wayne. I appreciate that, uh, that introduction and that, uh, uh, your insight onto LEAP and as well as this community responder, uh, model. Greetings to everyone on the council. Um, I'll just jump right into it. Um, so, uh, LEAP has worked with, uh, cities across the country to, uh, to implement community responder programs. Uh, these programs, as Wayne, uh, mentioned, involve sending well-trained, unarmed civilians to kind of handle, uh, low-level calls for service, uh, including many, uh, mental health and behavioral health calls, um, and other calls such as well wellness checks and safety checks, um, unwanted persons, uh, civil matters, escorts, um, loud music, uh, trespassing, um, and, and many other very low-level calls, uh, for service. As LEAP defines, uh, community responder, uh, model, there are three characteristics, uh, that we use, or three criteria. Um, number one, the community responders must act as true first responders and, uh, they don't show up after the police have cleared the scene. Uh, number two, uh, the police, uh, uh, the public can reach the community responder, uh, responders by calling 911. Uh, they don't have to remember this kind of long hotline, 10-digit number. Uh, and number three, community responders do not include police. If an officer is on a team, uh, say with a, a clinician or a mental health expert, we call that a co-responder team. So what you're looking at now, this, this, this diagram shows the calls, um, that are divided between police and community responders. I guess we can call it a traditional model and the new innovative community responder model. So traditionally, when, when someone calls 911, uh, if it, if it isn't a fire or a medical emergency, um, the dispatcher sends the police to the scene and, uh, the police handle the incident. However, in the community responder sequence, um, the calls are a triage by a call taker based on call type and other information. Um, if the call does not meet community responder eligibility, uh, the traditional model is followed, uh, and police are dispatched. However, if the call does meet community responder, uh, eligibility, um, then, uh, the community responders are dispatched and they resolve the incident. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, here are a few cities, uh, with community responder programs. Uh, many other cities have some form of expanded response, uh, while many others are currently developing or conceptualizing these programs, uh, in their jurisdictions. Um, it is important to recognize that Rochester has the PIC team or the PIC team, uh, that has done great work, uh, as it relates to mental health calls. Uh, it's also important, I want to point out that, uh, first on this list here is, uh, Kahoots. And, uh, Kahoots has been around for, for nearly 30 years and inspired, it, it inspired, uh, many of these models. Um, in fact, an officer left Eugene and he became the chief in Olympia. And he was so impressed with Kahoots, uh, that he started the crew team. Uh, later, an, another chief, uh, visited Kahoots and he visited crew, uh, and he was so impressed with that model, uh, with those models that he later started the Denver Star Team. Uh, I'm, I'm pointing this out because it shows that, uh, the police, um, have supported the idea of a community response since the inception, uh, of the idea. Uh, next slide, if you don't, Amos, thank you. Uh, so, uh, one of the most important steps, um, that LEAP, uh, takes in understanding the community's need for a community responder program is to, um, analyze 911 call data. So these numbers, uh, show the ranking of how common these call types in several cities, uh, we work with. Um, uh, for example, uh, check well-being is the second most common reason, uh, people call 911, um, to get a police response in Evanston, Illinois. Uh, it's the fourth most common reason in Amherst, uh, Massachusetts. It's the, uh, third most common reason in Dayton, Ohio, and it is the, uh, first most common reason in Brooklyn Center, uh, Minnesota. Uh, so every community is different and, and looking at the call data will allow us to see why the public, uh, in Rochester is requesting assistance and, and where they would, and where there would be, uh, an appropriate opportunity, uh, for community responders. Um, and I, I want to also point out that Rochester, uh, has a leg up on other cities because of the PIC team. Uh, it's already responding to mental health calls, uh, that come through 911 or 211. Uh, it's, uh, it's currently handling, I believe, um, about 45% of behavioral health, uh, calls. Um, and on top of that, the team is already operating 24/7, kind of putting, uh, Rochester far ahead of many other cities. Uh, however, however, uh, uh, under the current system, uh, PIC is, isn't handling any of the call types on this list, on this list, which are typically handled by community responder programs in other jurisdictions. So, um, uh, next slide. So, the needs assessment in Rochester, and I'm, I'm going to spend a little time discussing call narratives, uh, just so we can kind of get an understanding of what, uh, LEAP does. So LEAP provides expert advice to assist cities, uh, as they explore, conceptualize, and implement community responder programs. Uh, LEAP conducts a needs assessment that includes qualitative and quantitative examinations of 911 call narrative data to determine, uh, which call type and the percentage of calls that would likely be eligible for community responders. Um, this program, this two-pronged approach, um, starts with identifying, uh, eligible, eligible calls based on the call narrative and not just the categorized description of the calls. Um, the call narratives are the notes taken by 911 dispatch operators, uh, once a call for service is received. Um, the narratives contain more detailed information or context regarding the, uh, circumstances surrounding the calls for service. And based on that information, uh, recorded by the 911 dispatch, uh, in the call narrative, uh, calls for service are categorized into types. So, uh, call types are the way dispatch codes 911 calls. Um, these categories are, 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 um, often broad and often don't capture the essence of, of the calls for service. Uh, for example, um, in Atlanta, LEAP, uh, analyzed 911, uh, calls for service. And, um, many of the calls were coded as fight and progress, fight and progress, and fight and progress. And, uh, you would kind of assume that, um, everyone in Atlanta was, uh, Kung-Fu fighting. I don't know if you guys are kind of familiar with that old tune. Um, it would kind of indicate that, uh, there was this, this, this physical, these physical altercations everywhere. Um, however, our examination of the call narratives found that, um, often these calls that were coded fight and progress were actually for incidents, uh, such as a, a homeless person in the parking lot of a fast food restaurant or, uh, an individual playing the car stereo loudly and disturbing their neighbors. Uh, so these incidents were not actual physical altercations or fights, uh, but fight and progress was this kind of catch-all term for, for, for many different incidents. So this is why LEAP finds it imperative to, um, conduct narrative analysis. Um, also LEAP will use our law enforcement officials to, uh, engage in community, to engage community stakeholders, I apologize, uh, including police, uh, dispatch, the PIC team, and other community members to understand the current city dynamics and, uh, keep stakeholders involved and informed throughout the process. Um, LEAP has also developed a repository of information on programs across the country, uh, including the way programs are designed, uh, the type of responders, uh, the budgets, cost savings, uh, the types of calls responders handle, um, hours of operation, chain of command, uh, including which departments, uh, the programs are housed, and the type of training, uh, responders receive. Uh, so LEAP will use each of these pieces, um, the, the, the 911 narrative analysis, our law enforcement officials engaging, uh, community stakeholders, as well as our repository of information, uh, to, um, formulate a detailed needs assessment, uh, bespoke for Rochester. Um, and final slide. Uh, any questions, comments, or concerns? We will be, uh, we're here to answer, uh, to the best of our ability. And I thank you for taking the time to listen to this presentation.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. So, so with that, I'll, I'll open it up to, um, some questions from my colleagues. I do have one question I want to start off with. So here in Monroe County, we have, um, sort of s- shared resources in terms of the 911 system being a city and a county, uh, dynamic, where there's, we have an, an emergency communications director that's shared across the city and the county. Um, so, in, under that circumstance, have you worked in other cities where there's that kind of relationship? I'm sure we can aggregate the data, get the data about the city, but just understanding what, um, the dynamics have been in other places.
Yes, I believe so. I believe, um, in several cities, uh, county handles dispatch and there are several, like, uh, different jurisdictions that use the same, uh, county dispatch. Uh, so yes, in the past, we have worked with, um, cities with that kind of dynamic.
Kind of opened it up, any?
Similarly, you know, the county has their own version of the PIC team. Um, and they have slightly different, um, response protocols. And, you know, you mentioned that the PIC team, we have a leg up and we do, but it's primarily a, um, a co-response. And so that would be something I think that would be a little bit new to have a, be, ha- have a team be a true first responder um, for the number of, um, uh, call types that you listed.
Yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have two questions. So my first question is, can you talk a little bit about the credentials of the community response worker? And, um, yeah, and a little bit more about the definition of what you would call a serious crime.
Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll, I'll start with the second question first. I think typically when calls are dispatched for community responders, one of the three or three main questions are going to come up is there, uh, was there violence or weapons involved? Uh, is there a need for medical attention? And is there a need to file a police report? Uh, those are kind of the, the, um, sent, like, the, the center questions. Um, and if the answer to all of those questions are no, including other questions, um, then most likely the call would be eligible for a community responder. Uh, to speak on the qualifications, uh, in different jurisdictions, uh, community responders have, uh, different qualifications. Places like Amherst, um, there were no specific degree requirements, um, but the expectation were, uh, was that the, uh, those who were hired would be trained by the city and stuff like, uh, conflict resolution, uh, de-escalation, uh, maybe mental health first aid, um, um, trauma-informed care, uh, and include also, uh, safe, safe arrival, when, when they arrive on the scene to be, uh, to be aware of their situations, aware of the surroundings, as well as being trained on, um, police radio, uh, in, in case they would ever need to call for dispatch. And other places, you see, um, um, community responders are, are EMS and mental health social workers or licensed, um, clinicians. And other places, it's a peer support and a social worker. So, uh, in different jurisdictions, um, uh, based on, you know, um, I guess the recommendations of a task force or, or, uh, whomever, uh, responders have different qualifications. Hope I'm not rambling, I apologize.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up with, uh, with what Councilmember Smith had mentioned. What type of responder are you guys targeting? I mean, out of those three models that you explained, um, do you have a recommendation or have you talked about what would be best for the city of Rochester? Um, we do have a large population already of, um, combination of EMS, um, type responders as well as community type responders. So what would be the best model that you guys will suggest?
I, I think the, the best answer to that question is after we have actually done our needs assessment, uh, we would be better able to answer that question. Um, I, I do know that oftentimes, uh, community responder models are kind of built on responding to mental health calls. Uh, um, and that's often the easiest way to, uh, to build support. Uh, it's, it's, it's a very simple way to explain to the community that, uh, uh, police don't need to respond to mental health calls. We need, uh, mental health professionals. However, when models are built, uh, on, um, uh, responding to mental health before, having mental health professionals as the responders, it kind of, uh, isolates those other calls and eliminates those other calls that, uh, community responders can handle. Um, just as a, uh, police officer may not be the most appropriate responder for someone in mental health crisis, a social worker may not be the most appropriate responder for a noise complaint or a verbal dispute between neighbors. But I, to answer your question directly, I think after we've done our needs assessment, we will be able to, um, answer the, the, the type of responders for Rochester better.
Okay, thank you.
Additional question in that vein, and then I'll, I'll turn to Councilmember P O. Um, just understanding the dynamics of, of union contracts and collectively bargaining work. Um, I'm sure that in many cities, there's, once an analysis is done, there's kind of an uphill battle to change who responds to what. Um, can you maybe talk through some examples of other cities and how this work led to maybe some changes that were maybe difficult from a law enforcement perspective to give up or, um, any wins in that, in that vein?
I think we've had a lot of wins. I think the, the beauty, uh, and the significance of LEAP is that we have law enforcement officials who are able to act as, um, credible messengers to other law enforcement officials to convince them of the, um, the importance and the value of community responder models, uh, of the community responder model. Uh, in several places that we have worked with, police were initially resistant. Um, and after several conversations, uh, with our, uh, LEAP law enforcement officials and, uh, we would hear, we hear their concerns, address their concerns. Sometimes the concerns are about safety. Uh, sometimes the concerns are about liability. Um, and we're able to address those concerns, uh, in ways that us, that have often satisfied the police. And, uh, I'm happy to say that in most instances, we have gotten, uh, police support and we were able to, uh, stand up, uh, stand up these programs.
I was wondering, can you give a different way about the, the, just the contract? Like, did you run into contract issues with changing the, uh, responder to community responder versus an officer?
Union contract.
Yes.
Well, I, I, I'll think I'll let Amos answer the contract question.
Um, yeah, no, thank you. It's, it's a very good question. I think that we have, the short answer is we have not run into an issue with union contracts in any of the cities where we have worked. Um, I know that that's something that, you know, for example, in Olympia, um, it has been brought up by their police union. It was something that was brought up years ago. As you all know, police union contracts are different in every city. So if, uh, fortunately with LEAP, we have, uh, a lawyer on staff, Lisa Tenenbaum, our colleague who's not here with us, um, who d- normally does our policy review and, uh, union contract review, which we've done for, um, another jurisdiction. So if that were, if you were interested in adding that to the scope, I do think that review of the police union contract in the context of, uh, any potential impact on this program, I think that would be great. Ultimately, our goal, as Lionel was saying, is to get police buy-in for the program, um, rather than just, just trying to avoid, you know, a, a lawsuit under, under the union contract. Ideally, we would have support because as Lionel said, you know, these aren't the calls that police are generally, uh, excited about responding to. It's not where they see the most value in, in their responses. Um, and Wayne, I didn't know if you wanted?
Yeah, I want to, I just want to interject. So when we were building the community responder model, one of the first things we did was sit down with law enforcement across the board and we talked, we sort of brainstormed how this would look and the obstacles that we would run into, one of which, and I'll be very honest, I brought this up to Amos when we first started talking about this, was the concept of collective bargaining agreements. For example, the city of Rochester, and you guys should know that you were very, very well represented in our conversations on building the community responder model, because I brought what I knew from Rochester to the table. And I know that our city charter mandates that the Rochester Police Department are the ones that perform law enforcement duties in the city of Rochester. So we needed to be not only aware that there were collective bargaining agreements that may become obstacles in the establishment of a community responder model and be prepared to actually navigate around that. Now, you know, the, the sort of generalized answer that we're giving to you in terms of police recognizing that there are some responsibilities that uniformed officers don't necessarily need to go to, is very easy to say, but as we all know, there is a reality to this, that me as a locust club is going to come in and go, oh, hang on, that's a police function and I'm not sure we want to give up that responsibility. This is quite possibly going to take some negotiation with the union to say, this is the direction the city of Rochester wants to go. We recognize that the, the Rochester Police Department has the primary responsibility for managing criminal justice or policing needs in the city of Rochester. However, we've already built the PIC team. We recognize that there are other responsibilities that officers go to that may not necessarily necessitate them being uniformed personnel going, and this is the direction we want to move to. So, uh, I'm not going to sit here and I'm not going to allow my colleagues to sit here and, and sell you a wolf ticket. This is likely going to be something that has to be negotiated through, but it is possible to do. And in the cities that we have gone into that have unions and collective bargaining agreements, they've been at least open to the conversation.
So I have Councilmember P O followed by Councilmember Patterson, followed by Councilmember Harris.
I have a related question. Is your question?
Go ahead.
Law enforcement duties can be broadened. Some of these responses aren't necessarily criminal. So do you know if that's something that, you know, like a wellness check isn't a law enforcement activity because it's not breaking the laws? Is, is that something that, like, we would be able to work around?
Can you, can you sort of clarify the question or just sort of clarify that a little bit, please, man?
So, I mean, I guess I'm wondering, in your opinion, the definition of law enforcement activity, would that include, um, homelessness or a wellness check if it's not a criminal call?
Yeah, that, that's sort of what Lionel was, was referring to before. If we go by the narrative assessment or the, the narrative analysis in, that the telecommunicator does, the notes that the telecommunicator takes to actually, shall I hold on for a second? Timeout. Okay, we're calling timeout.
Maybe they lost the sound. Oh, the audio turned off. Well, they signaled very well.
No.
We think we're back.
There we go.
Sorry.
I thought we had broken you guys for a minute.
So we missed your answer completely.
So it, it's actually, um, it's, it goes back to what Lionel was talking about before with the narrative analysis and the work that's done on the telecommunicators and to determine whether or not the call that's coming into the 911 system is a criminal matter versus something that versus something that may not necessarily be a criminal matter, for example, a nuisance or a noise complaint. Or even in some cases, a disorderly conduct, if it's just a person that's, you know, standing out in the middle of the street and screaming and bothering his neighbors or her neighbors, um i- i- it's it's gonna depend, it's gonna be dependent on whoever is taking the nine one one call to ask the appropriate questions to determine whether or not this is a criminal matter or something that would fit into the community responder model.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to tack on very quickly um that you know, yeah, there's nothing in state statutes or anything in law that says these types of calls have to be handled by uh police for the for the calls we're talking about. And there is, it I think the the reason that it comes up in union contracts is not that the union contract would say anything about homelessness or mental health calls or anything like that, doesn't specify that. It's just that any change to remove something that's currently on the police's plate can sometimes be considered work skimming. Uh, it just it depends on the individual contract, but that's where we've seen it come up as a potential concern.
That's a review.
If some, what are some of the uh KPIs that are in these other cities that and how are they collecting data to make sure that this new program is actually working?
I'm I'm sorry, you said KPIs?
Key performance indicator?
Thank you. Um, I think Eugene, Oregon is the uh the oldest um model. Um, and it is the one with probably the most data uh available. Many programs are now a year or two uh in existence. Uh, so I'll rely a little bit on 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 Eugene. So Eugene has um uh had in terms of cost savings, uh it saved millions of dollars for the city. Um, it initially started off as a uh as a smaller uh program without many hours of operation. Has it had since um expanded into twenty four seven response. Uh, and many other uh models have done the same thing. Uh, started off as a pilot program, expanded to twenty four hour, twenty four hour, seven days a week response. So uh cities like uh believe Austin, uh and I don't want to start naming cities off the top of my head, but many other cities have um seen the value of of the community responder model. Uh, seen the performance uh um and oftentimes, after the pilot has taken place, uh, police officers become one of the biggest uh proponents of the program because they are now uh able to, again, to respond to more serious crime. Uh, and um, yeah, I'll I'll leave it there because I can tend to ramble. I apologize.
Are you kind of asking about evaluation?
Right. So are we looking at maybe um uh police officer shootings are down or um arrests are down? Like, how are we seeing if it's actually working as opposed to, uh, you know, police, obviously, I would think, you know, it takes a lot of responsibility, a lot of heat off of them, so they're going to feel good about it. But is it actually working to where you say this is worth this amount of money? As opposed to investing that into more police officers?
Yeah, I I I definitely believe that in uh the jurisdictions, we see a reduction in arrest. We also see uh, for instance, in Eugene, uh they're handling about fifteen percent of the calls. Uh, but I think Amos wo- would would be able to to answer this question a little bit better. He has a little bit more knowledge on the on on the on those stats.
Sure. I mean, it's a it's a great question. Unfortunately, you know, this is an area that, as Lionel was saying, Kahoots has been around for thirty years, but people weren't really studying it. And then all of a sudden, two years ago, everyone had suddenly started hearing about Kahoots. And the research, you know, that could have been done over the last thirty years was was not done. And I think the Denver STAR program, which started about two years ago, is being studied very carefully. I'm sure there's studies happening now with with Kahoots. So there have been some initial estimates of of cost savings. Kahoots has certainly reported um cost savings. I haven't seen like pure journal articles necessarily, you know, the type the types of research that you might see on a program. Fundamentally, the number one indicator, as Lionel said, is Kahoots handles fifteen percent of the overall citizen initiated calls for service uh that, you know, would normally have gone to police in Eugene and in other cities. You know, that's the primary indicator is how many calls were taken off of the plate of police. Normally, something like a police shooting is so rare that you wouldn't be able to show a statistically significant change one way or the other. And when you actually, you know, at Denver is start tracking the data and looking very specifically at what questions you can answer, then you can answer questions like uh which calls are coming from which locations and what referrals are the uh responders making? And you could, you know, track specific individuals who may frequently be involved in police calls or, you know, nine one one calls and see if those calls with those individuals fall over time. Um, and, you know, there's a lot of other questions you can answer, but I think that um you can certainly look at changes in arrest um that would happen before and after uh a program occurring. And I I believe that's gotta be one of the primary things that Denver is looking at with their analysis because I think we all, you know, can understand the importance if they're able to uh avoid those arrests. Um, I will say that, you know, Denver's program in, let's say, two years of operation, they haven't called for police assistance at all. And the prime, the number one call type that they handle is what Denver has this unfortunately named call type unwanted person. I believe they changed it to loitering, uh but it's, you know, a business uh calling up about somebody who is blocking the front door, won't leave that type of a conflict. And the fact that they have been able to, you know, handle all of these without going to the police. You know, I don't I don't need a study to convince me that, you know, that is a benefit. And the police were glad to not have to handle those calls and the businesses were glad to not have to involve police. And the individuals were certainly glad that they didn't have the police called on them.
And I know a little bit about the Denver model. They don't just sit and wait to be called. They're out in the community resolving issues that they see, handling uh, you know, giv- giving resources to people of homeless, et cetera.
So Councilmember Patterson and then Councilmember Harris.
Mr. Harris, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, sir.
Okay, so you are intimately familiar with the city of Rochester from a policing perspective. Um, what do you see initially as the challenges we would face in trying to roll out or expand this model here in Rochester?
So. No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
But you don't have to limit that to just the policing challenges, but in general, you you know this issue probably better than anybody else in the room because he's duck with his hands on it. What is, what's your opinion? You know, what are what are what are we missing here that you think you that you need to let us be aware of?
So, well, first, we already spoke about the collective bargaining agreement, the Locus Club's position on this. I think we can all anticipate what um President Mazzio is going to say about this and and what their executive board is 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 their position that they're going to take. Um, but before I get into that, Mike, i- if I could, just as far as the KPIs are concerned, um e- even though there hasn't been an awful lot of analysis done on many of the cities and, you know, to Amos's point, this is in its infancy. These are brand new policy or brand new programs that are being implemented across the board. We just haven't really built that data yet. That said, it it is a, or we will be able to build KPIs into a program. For example, if we're taking a look at now at the number of nuisance arrests that are going on in the city of Rochester, if we begin collecting that kind of data and we track it from the time we implement the program to say two years out noticing that those numbers are going down, then we can draw a correlation to say that, yes, there's been a significant change in that regard. Same thing with uses of force. If we take a look at some of the uses of force to determine whether or not they're a part of uh a response for a mental health issue or response to a disorderly conduct or response to a nuisance issue, and we see that the uses of force from the Rochester Police Department has gone down, then perhaps we can draw a correlation between that as well. So, you know, KPIs, although they're they're few and far between right now for what's going on elsewhere in the country, certainly KPIs can be built into a program here in Rochester to determine the success of the program. So to answer your question in terms of the obstacles that that may exist here in Rochester, as all of us know, there are a number of different entities in in uh in Rochester that are eager to see that policing be done appropriately and well. UCLM, I I know we mentioned Reverend Stewart a little while ago and his belief that a program like this would be good. Um, but there are not a lot of people that, or there are some people that don't necessarily agree with UCLM or Reverend Stewart that are going to take a little bit of convincing. There are some people that feel that the Rochester Police Department is, you know, the the primary group that ought to be going out there and doing the job. But to convince them that there are responsibilities of uniformed personnel that don't necessarily need to rest on their shoulders is gonna be a challenge for us. And this is, it's not something that's just happening here, but in every city that we go into, we have to convince the population that this is part of the best practices of policing right now. Identifying those jobs that officers are going to that maybe they don't need to and putting together teams of individuals that are skilled and well-trained and sending them out to alleviate that responsibility from police. I think that's probably gonna be the primary obstacle. And ultimately, um, councilman, that that boils down to education. That that boils down to how we present this to the city of Rochester and explain to them that not just here in Rochester, but everywhere across the country, these are some of the best practices that are being used to make sure policing is done appropriately.
So you're not worried about finding the appropriate folks to implement the program? You're not worried about the safety of the individuals uh relative to the hours of operation and calls going out? Those those aren't issues of of huge concern to you at all?
So y- you know, when we first started talking about community responder models and and not just LEAP, but when, you know, individuals that are in this game across the board, when we first started talking about putting together civilian teams to go out there, that was one of the primary concerns. How are we going to keep people safe? And there are multitude of stories out there of, unless, for the sake of conversation, take a mental health concern. There are a number of different conversations that are available for anyone to find out about about incidents of mental health challenges or people in mental health crisis that, for whatever reason, turned violent. Um, the the reality is statistically, those are few and far between. Do they occur? Yes. Unfortunately, it's also why law enforcement ended up holding that responsibility in the first place. You know, people in the city of Rochester are gonna look at Denny Wright and go, well, you know, here's a police officer that ended up getting, you know, injured for for life. He's he's now blind for life. Um, but but that was uh statistically, and I I guess that's the the only way I can put this, sir.
You got it. You don't have to go.
Yeah, statistically, it just it just isn't that high a degree of of concern. So I think the answer is going to lie in training. How well we prepare individuals to go out and do this work? And we are in no way suggesting that we just, you know, a a week-long training session, we send them out there with a radio and a clipboard and say, do the job. This is something that I think is gonna take partnership with other entities here in the city of Rochester to make sure that the people that are going out there as community responders are well-trained and experienced, able to recognize when a situation is going to turn negative and be also trained in how to remove themselves from a situation if they see those things occurring.
Okay, well.
I'm sorry.
Let me just talk to you real quick. Okay, I I hear you, but at the same time, one of my other concerns is that the the duties from just what I've heard quickly that these folks would be tasked with for to cut across DES, NBD, RPD and and police dispatch. So that's three, that's at least four different parts of city government. Let me see.
I don't understand. Excuse me. Let me ask that question.
No, you're 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 not wrong, though.
The challenge is, so where do you, so when you're you're thinking, where does this entity live? Because it's it live, like, you know, a noise complaint is RPD could well dive into NBD, could well kick into DES, you know, the dog stuff, everything. And I and I know you know that, so that's why I'm asking, like, so where do you see this thing living in city government?
So, well, first, let me just propose this to you, that you remove, you know, as you're considering this, the the notion that this is solely about fixing the police. You know, well, that's the, well, that's the ultimate goal, to make sure policing is done appropriately. To your point, this is going to touch on a lot of different entities in the city of Rochester. So it's going to take um not just coordination, but as it comes into the night, so similar to i- if something comes into the nine one one center right now and it's not necessarily um police, but more of a DES issue, DES would be sent and and respond to that. So in terms of who is going to house this particular function, I but that's that's gonna be your charge. That's going to be the charge of of city government to determine exactly where this group would lie, who they would be responsible to, whether they would answer to the DES commissioner or y- you know, the if there it's gonna be a part of um recreation and human services. I I don't know the answer to that question. I can tell you, though, that I think Rochester is well-suited to to figure that out and to put a unit together that would be responsible to whoever you decided to assign that to.
So and I I I know we couple more questions. I want to make sure we get to those questions in the interest of time. Um, I appreciate everyone sticking around a little bit past five. Um, so I'll move it to Councilmember Harris.
I want to make mine brief. I just uh wanted to go back to some of the data. Um, I know you mentioned that you guys don't have all the data from all the other um models from other or across the country, but I was wondering if this particular data you may have, what percentage or their percentage of what those calls represent, like the call that you guys have moved away from the police? Like we, like with the PIC team, we know that those calls that was moved away from the police was forty five percent of the overall call volume. Do you guys have an idea, you know, what other cities have, what what that percentage represents to other cities? Collectively or may maybe just one city?
Well, I believe overall, uh, as we've done our uh our uh a- a- analysis of 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 call narrative data, about twenty to twenty-two percent of all nine one one calls uh could be um community responder eligible. And that's from looking at various different um jurisdictions.
So I I apologize. I just want to follow up really quick, if you don't mind. You mean twenty-two percent, is that including mental health or separate from mental health? Because here in Rochester. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, that's including mental health. I can think of um um one jurisdiction that we worked with. I don't know if I want to say the name, but it's uh um, when we looked at their call narrative data, uh only about five point eight percent of the uh calls that were eligible for community responders related to mental health. The vast majority of the calls were about conflict resolution, uh case management issues, finding uh connecting homeless people or houseless people to uh to to services, uh noise complaints uh and the others. So the the overall is about um the aggregate, I guess, of the the number of jurisdictions that we worked with is about twenty to twenty-two percent.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, I gotta I gotta leave. I apologize.
No, no problem. If if you guys don't mind, I I wanted to jump in prior when we were talking about um both, we were talking about safety uh as well as the the housing of the uh of the of the community responders. I think that's one of the things that, uh, and I don't think, I know that's one of the things that LEAP will assess as we uh do the needs assessment in Rochester. But as we talk about safety and and individuals in the community who may be uh hesitant to have civilians respond to very contentious, possibly contentious situations, I just want to rely on my own personal experience. For about four years, I worked as a child protection investigator. Uh, and I know that police go into very contentious, life-threatening uh situations. Uh, but there are very few situations on planet Earth that are more contentious um and heated than going into someone's home at two o'clock in the morning and telling the mother that you're gonna have to remove their child for the next seventy-two hours until she sees a judge. And uh child protection um uh workers and investigators are doing this throughout the country every day, responding uh to these these very uh serious calls for service as it relates to the the safety of the most vulnerable. safety of the most vulnerable individuals in our, in our, in our society.
My, my question is maybe, uh, I, I don't know how to qua- how to qualify it, so I'll just ask it. You talked about cahoots being the kind of longest-serving model in, in this space and how they do really good work. We brought that group in on a, what, six-month contract or however long the contract was? We've spent a lot of money already trying to build out some of these systems. And as you mentioned, we've made some progress. PIC has certainly been successful to a degree. PIC also still has huge problems that two years later have not been resolved. And I don't think there's exactly necessarily a clear path to resolve them. In part because this is very complicated and complex work. But knowing that we've already brought in the longest-standing one of these organizations, contacted them, picked their brain, I wanna understand a little bit specifically about what it is that LEAP is going to do that we haven't already paid for elsewhere.
Well, I'm not sure what, what cahoots did when they came in, but I can tell you what LEAP is, uh, what, what LEAP will do, specifically looking at that call narrative data to be able to kind of understand the, the lay of the land as it relates to community responder eligible calls. I don't think any other agency that's kind of in this space approaches the, the, the 911 data with both a qualitative and a quantitative assessment. And I think our strongest point that LEAP has is that we have law enforcement on our side. We have 250 law enforcement officials who are able to, to use the, their, their credibility as, as, as law enforcement officials to kind of get the buy-in from police, to get the buy-in from the community. Something very powerful about the uniform and the badge and it's well-respected in many segments of society.
Well, I, I appreciate that answer because, I mean, for the last three years, I've, I've thought that the, the center of all of this is 911 calls. And I don't think there's been nearly enough reflection on not just what the data that we know, but how to properly disentangle it in a meaningful way. So I don't know where you are in the process at this point of talking to the administration here. I probably missed the, the beginning, but I would love for there to be a really specific focus on 911, on the inter-bunucial relationship that President Melendez talked about with county and city. I think there's a lot of untapped opportunity there to- and responsibility.
To, to just address that, when Peru was here, we were really narrowly focused on only three mental health call types, and we didn't do a full 911 analysis.
Yeah, actually, council member Gruber, thank you for that question. And, and ultimately, the 911 analysis is probably the center and, and, and the heart of this program. And once that analysis is done, building the program around that is, is where the, the gold lies.
Okay, great. Well, I'm sure there's some additional questions and thoughts, but at this point, you know, we will continue the dialogue. Jill Dan is here representing administration, so I think we'll have some back and forth to determine some next steps here. And we appreciate all of your time today in going through this presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, very much. It's good to see all of you. Hopefully, we can get together in person someday soon.
All right, sounds good.
Take care.
Bye.